All right, everyone. Good afternoon. It is now one o'clock and we are going to reconvene where we left off. And where we left off was talking about the up to recommendations from the staff. It seemed like from my opinion, or at least where I'm sitting, same day dialer rides seem to be a favorite of this group. Uh, why don't we discuss option number two? And then see if there were any of the services that we feel that we could eliminate, one of which was the late night and one of which was Sunday. And at this time, I'd like to open up for discussion.
What kind of discussion are you looking for, Ryan?
Uh, just discussion if uh, anyone would like to say that they don't think any of those services would be a good fit? Or if there is, if they agree with the staff recommendations and if they do agree with the staff recommendations, how would they like to move forward?
Okay, uh, I'll start. I definitely agree it. I then I, I agree with the consensus of the board, which does seem to be that same day dialer ride is the one that we are the most interested in moving forward with. And that seems to be in line with what the staff was also the most interested. So it seems like other one is moving in that, in that direction. As for the second one, I personally am and torn between airport and Sunday. I think that they each have different pros, yeah, had different pros and cons, uh, different, different benefits, different segments of the calculation that could potentially be interested. That is an area that I probably would, I personally would maybe like to see some more discussion or some financial information like we talked about earlier. You know, I, I could, I could, I could go either way in, in that direction. I am not in, I think the late night service is a bad idea. Again, in my opinion. I think it's opening up to some issues and I think it's not gonna be a, I can't see it being highly enough used for that to be a benefit. And I, and I understand that there's workers that could benefit from that. But again, without being presented, there was a concrete number of how many workers have, you know, or at least an approximate idea of like, we've talked to these businesses and you know, they have worked, you know, whatever, something like that. I think my concern is that that would not be, that would be ineffective use of the money.
Okay. In one of the statements, and I could have been clarified, this is when we were on the break, um, one of the things that Ben had mentioned to me about the uh, financial commitment of the agency is that he viewed it as no matter if you picked option one, two, three, or four, that the agency's commitment is $1 million for that line of service. So we would be committing $2 million total. And I'll ask you to just clarify that a little bit, please.
Yeah. So I'm not, I'm not sure I did a great job explaining that, but the way I view the financial commitment for this is up to a million dollars for each service. So, you know, a million dollars provides a fixed number of assets. And we would commit to that. And if the service became wildly successful and we were having a lot of denials, which we would be able to track, we could then discuss if we wanted to invest more in the service or we've made our commitment. This is it. I, I don't, uh, I don't view any of them as sort of a like a blank check is that if the service is super successful, that we would just automatically provide more of it. It's really a up to a million bucks. Now, now same day dialer ride, you could have a situation where you start to shift resources from regular dialer ride into same day, if it was that popular. Um, but it wouldn't, there, there wouldn't be a situation where we would spend more than a million dollars. I, I don't think that that would, would make a lot of sense. I also don't think that that would be necessary i- in the long run. Um, so it's really a fixed, kind of think of it as a cap per service.
So let me understand that if, if you don't mind. Um, so a million dollars. So if we spend a million dollars in two years or three years, we say, okay, it's we then reevaluate it, or I guess what, what, what is, what does that $1 million cap mean? Do we stop at $1 million? Did we reevaluate it $1 million?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we would be, we would be saying we're gonna spend up to a million dollars a year.
A year.
A year. Yeah. It could be less than that. Um, if we saw demand reaching a point where that wasn't sufficient, we would see that coming. You know, it's unlikely that it would just appear overnight. Everything for us takes a long, long time to build. Um, and that's part of that three year sort of ramp up period. So we would be watching it and be able to say like, hey, this is really popular, or maybe it's not. And we would be talking about it as it happened. And so if, if we saw it ramping up incredibly quickly, we would have a discussion that would, my recommendation would likely be, okay, well, it's a million dollars a service. We're not gonna provide more. We'll, we'll have some denials at that point. Or maybe we say one of them, maybe same day dialer ride takes off and airport service doesn't. Then we may say, well, airport service is not doing as well. Let's take 200 from it and put it in the same day to sort of help that out. But I still, I really, I would not recommend more than that total $2 million a year. I don't think that would be a good financial decision. So it really would be a pretty hard cap.
What we're really talking is $6 million.
That was my next comment, you know? Well, you felt we need to go three years to prove out, you know, any of these, you know?
Yeah. Correct. Well, my, my total recommendation is 20 million, which is $2 million a year for 10 years. But on each service, you, to see if it's really working, you do need two years of, or I'm sorry, three years of uh, service.
Well, I don't, yeah. But, but we wouldn't from a, from a investment standpoint, we're not talking $20 million today. What we're talking about is committing $6 million to see if we want to go to the $20 million. I mean, what you're, what you're really saying is these two services are gonna cost a total of $6 million.
For three years. Yes.
Correct. Yes. Correct. So we're not signing up for a million dollars and a million dollars. We're signing up for $6 million.
In theory, yeah. And realistically, the startup period is when the expenses will probably be smaller. So it would probably be less. If we looked at it for just three years, it probably less than three million. I don't know exactly how much, but it depend on how much we could, you know, how much it would, it would grow.
That's where those projections come in very handy.
Yeah, they're they're gonna, I mean, we'll work on them, but they're gonna be very chal- they're gonna be very theoretical. How would I say that?
It, in addition on the projections, will you be able to outline some type of a budget for say, the first three years? Just an, you know, estimate a budget of what it's gonna cost to get these services online?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's roughly a million dollars a year.
Okay.
I mean, we've, we've, we've thought through that, that, that the hard part about this stuff is, you know, you, you can't hire all the people immediately. So we say a million dollars a year is the goal.
I guess that's my point is, you know, what's it gonna be estimated year one, year two, year three? And if it's ramping up, you know, say it's half million first year, one million second year, you know, two million, third, whatever, 1.5 third year. I mean, that, that's good information for us to know.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can estimate all that stuff. I mean, it's the transit service is very much a if you build it, they will come type of industry. And so I can make these estimates, but they're gonna be pretty significant, like leaps of faith that things will happen in a way we think.
That's, that's more information than I have now. So I'll I just tried to get a feel for what it is, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a significant investment.
Yeah.
You know, from that standpoint. And I understand that, you know, we won't know all the answers today. We won't know all those answers, you know, probably for two or three years to what that, you know, overall is gonna look like.
Yeah. I mean, what, what we can probably do, what, what a lot of times you do when you make an estimate for these in, in our business is you take, you look at how many hours of service you can provide. And then, you know, you kind of guess how many people will use it. And so we can do that. That would be the normal process we could do. I mean, unless we want to hire a consultant and really do like some really in-depth modeling, which I'm not sure would bear any worthwhile fruit, but we, we, we could do that.
I mean, you had to have some rough back of the napkin calculations to say they all cost a million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we sort of it's not, we didn't say we backed into it, but we looked at what service costs to provide, you know, a normal dialer ride trip is around $39. And so we said, you know, how many dialer ride trips in same day service to get for 39 bucks a trip? And we said, this is where we're comfortable with on a service level. Cause the way you know, transit is very much you, you, you decide how much service you're comfortable spending money on. And then you commit to that. That's whether that's, you know, normal or not, that's, that's normal for our business. Um, and you say, this is how much you, you look at a service, you say, this is the service we want to provide. This is how much it would cost. A lot of transit industry systems get into a lot of trouble when they do ridership projections and things are way different. So we most of us shy away from it.
Okay. So the one thing you said that I thought was kind of interesting and it was different than how I would have predicted. So you said transit is you build it, they will come. But you also said in that statement that you think that over time, the cost gets higher than the startup. And I would have presumed at least in most businesses, a startup sometimes can be the most capital intensive. When if you're doing airport service, you've gotta buy 10 minivans. Now you're probably gonna say you're gonna repurpose the ones you're buying, um, and for dialer ride. So some of it just, I think works maybe a little bit differently than my mind is wired to think cost wise.
Yeah. I mean, it's not like starting up the manufacturing of a new widget where you have to, you know, build up a bunch of capital in advance. You know, a lot of these are incremental changes to our business that don't, you know, same day dollar, it's gonna require software, you know, Bill talked about that, you know, that, that, that will be the capital expense for that one. You know, the, the, the question I still don't know the answer to is if we can buy an off the shelf product would be you know, choice number one, or if we're gonna have to pay to partially develop something, which I would really like to avoid. Um, I know I can buy an off the shelf service that provides it as a separate service, but I think that's a bad, we, we talked about that model. So really, and that's kind of true for airport service, because we can same day dollar, it's not gonna take different vehicles. It's gonna use our current fleet. So yeah, it's, it's the expenses are really in the people. I mean, just like our business, you know, 75% of our expenses are in people. And that's where like, you know, if you, you decide how much service you want to provide and you kind of back into how many people you have and how many trips you can service. Which is not a traditional way of doing things.
For me, Ben, excuse me, for me, uh, it's I would, I would rate him as the same day dialer ride services being number one. As I said earlier, too, the, the late night service and the airport service is a toss up for me. So I'm saying that's number two, and then the Sunday services would be number four for me. Uh, and again, as I said earlier, that kind of goes back to what is the gap and how are we feeling on that? Or what, what is the demand for that gap? And that's gonna come out with other projections, I think it's your, you're talking about some. Just to give you my input.
Yeah. I mean, the, so kind of talking about the financials, like, so think about so I guess think about if we do same day dialer ride. The concept is that we would have separate buses for people to book trips same day. So when we do a cost analysis for that, we'll look at what overhead we need, which is, you know, operation staff, dispatch, customer service, those are fixed. So those are easy. Those are, you know, you need A, B, and C. After that is where you say how much money do we have left? And that's how many bus drivers we hire. That's how many buses you put on the road and you back into it in a way. And you say, okay, we're gonna make this initial service offering. This is what it's gonna cost. And that's where we got to a million dollars. And so you, you kind of back into it. Now that isn't a traditional business model. And then, and you try it out and you say, okay, here's what the service is. Does it work or doesn't it work? And you adjust over time. And so it's the hard part is to predict human behavior, right? And, and is to say, do we think this will result in new customers coming to us because we're easier to use than we used to be? Do we say, we think this percentage of existing customers will move from pre-scheduled dialer ride to same day dialer ride? Or do we think that our existing customers will use it more because it's more accessible? So there's a lot of fluctuation in how we make those guesses, right? And so the way we make those guesses is we, we can talk to peers and see what experiences they have. Usually there's always a slightly different flavor that we have to kind of guesstimate around. And it, it can give you some estimate of what we think will happen, but there's traditionally not much beyond that.
You're more an expert than we are, I think so.
Well, but I mean, I, it's also my job to provide you what you asked me. So.
Yeah. Ben, I have a question on the same day dial, right? Let's just say theoretically 75% of our, our current customers move to a same day dialer ride. And I'm assuming same day dialer ride is more inefficient from a scheduling perspective than the way we do it today. Could we in theory not be able to provide as much service if everybody, you know, theoretically moved to same day dialer ride?
Potentially. That, that gets into the whole conversation about the, the other layer to that is, you know, are we gonna charge the same dollar amount for same day versus advanced scheduling? About 50% of our trips today are what's called a subscription. And that's where a person does the same thing every day. They don't call for a trip. The system auto generates it every time it opens. So when the system opens the day at 4:00 AM, it says, I have these subscriptions, it auto generates them. So we would likely not below 50% because those are trips that people, they're, they're usually work. You know, they, they do the same thing every day. They don't need a different trip. Um, so I would not envision a world where same day did more than 50% of our service because it would be inconvenient for folks.
Yeah, and I'm not against it. I just, it was just a thought I had.
Yeah, sure. That's a good thought.
Or what it's worth, I, worth, I worked for a gentleman, very successful businessman for a while early in my career, and I was struggling with putting some forecasts together. And he said, well, as an old artillery man, what I, what we used to do is shoot one short, shoot one long, and then fire for effect. So essentially what he was saying was give us a low case, give us a high case, and the truth will probably be somewhere in between.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm just cautioning you guys that it's it's really staff guessing.
All staff guessing. I don't care what business you're talking about.
Well.
It's all staff guessing. You know, that, what you're talking about is nothing different than what the industry works with all the time.
But industry is not subject to public records. And we get into, it can be very challenging when we made a prediction that's in, then a public data point. And people come back at us and they're like, look at how wrong you were. And that can be very challenging sometimes.
Well, go to a shareholder meeting sometime.
But are we, are we better off not trying to put together a projection and just make a wild guess and throw a dart and say, we think this is gonna work? I mean, like, I, I think Chuck said, you know better than us. You do. No doubt about it. So just give us some more information. I think that's all.
I'm not.
And I completely understand your position and I understand that you, you, you can't predict what's going to happen, you know, to an accuracy of what, what, what the reality is gonna be, but we need something to go.
Sure. I'm, I'm certainly not trying to get out of making a projection or say we can't do it. I'm just making sure that we, expectations are, are appropriate, I guess.
Well, speaking for myself, I think you beat that one up pretty good.
Sorry, I'll stop then.
I think we recognize the difficulty that you're dealing with.
Did we have? Are you guys thinking? Are we, should, should we have, uh, projections, prepares for all of them? Or should we do some kind of vote or some kind of consensus about what are the top two or three of them or anything else that we think of that we wanna like move forward with? Is there anything we can already eliminate? Or are you, are we not comfortable with eliminating anything until you see numbers?
I'd I'll speak for myself. I'd be comfortable looking at numbers for the two recommendations that the staff made. I, I, I think almost universally, we're agreed on same day dialer ride. Um, it seems like that would be a value add. It seems like on the second recommendation, there's a little bit more of all over the place, but I think that it's far different than other services we've offered. And there's a lot of logistical hurdles. Um, I'll just speak about the others. I don't get excited about the late night service personally. I'm not sure from 12 to two is, I understand it's really from nine to two, but I'm just thinking like, I can't imagine seeing a lot of Lake Tram buses at 12 to two in the morning. So that's my opinion.
I would real quickly say that we can provide you a better estimate with a narrowed in focus because how these services dovetail into each other can change the cost estimates. So you don't have to do that, but it will increase the precision of what we can give you.
I would agree with Brian to do two.
Yes, Donna. Donna, can you put your microphone on?
For getting that switch. I totally agree with the same day dialer ride and the airport service. I feel like they have the most potential. And if you, if you wanna do two, let's look at those two first. And my other thought is I still feel that Sunday service can potentially pivot off either the existing dialer ride or the same day dialer ride eventually. And Dito late night, although that is totally at the bottom of my list because I have a hard time seeing in Lake County, Ohio, that we're gonna get enough ridership to even justify the expense of doing it. That's my concern. So I think these two have the most potential.
Barry and Lane, I'd like to hear what, do you guys have any, any thoughts on, do you wanna go on these two? What, what are your thoughts?
I'm good on the first two.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good as well.
Sounds like that's the direction we should go then. Sorry, Brian, I'm taking your job away from you.
Oh, it's fantastic. That's great. I'm more than welcome.
So we will, um, put together some financial modeling. So what, we'll show you what we think the expenses will be. We'll show you what we think the revenue will be. We're gonna make some assumptions on what the board might like, unless you wanna talk about it of what the fares for airport service should be. And potentially what the fares for same day dialer rides should be. Those will have sort of significant impacts, especially airport service. So unless anyone wants to have, give me any guidance. I mean, we, we have some internal opinions, um, but.
My, if, my opinion is I think you have, you and your team have to run with throwing the initial thing
Okay.
out there.
Okay.
Um, sure. So just so everyone is on the same page, the next slide that Ben had on here was decide which services to launch, prioritize, and then work it into the budget, et cetera, et cetera. So I think based on what we're hearing now, you know, the timeline is gonna be slightly relaxed. What type of timeline in the perfect world are you looking for? Are you looking for this to be included in the 2024 budget, which means we're at September, so budget November-ish?
I mean, I don't want to rush the board's decision-making process. So I will talk to my team and see, you know, we have apta in October. I was, in an ideal world, I'd love to bring you some projections in October. I'm not sure I'll be able to do that. We may be able to bring you one. Um, I'll, I'll see. In theory, I'd love to be able to talk about one of these or two of them potentially in the budget for next year. It would obviously be late next year before anything would actually be rolled out. But, um, let me, let me come back to you with that a little bit. I mean, you did say in an ideal world, in an ideal world, we would know that we're gonna do those, these two things, we'd include them in the budget next year and we can start moving towards them next year. I'm not sure we can get it done that fast.
What is the timeline for rolling out a service?
Um, both of them are dependent on software. And so to be honest, I, I probably will learn some of that in apta because if, if we can buy an existing product that lets us do same day the right way, I'll say it, then it would just be purchasing software and implementing it. If we have to go into a development road, I have less certainty. I also don't like that. They all do what, what I, what, what I think is silly where they have two accounts for people. So, um,
Ben, I, I, the way I kind of look at this is we're asking you to take a deeper dive into some of these things. Don't have enough really information to really give you a finalized uh, direction yet. So let's make the next step in getting the information back to us. Um, as far as the budget goes, we have really two options there. You can either throw something in for the 2024 budget. Now, or as we have done in the past, we have modified the budgets other times of the year also. So we, we don't have to have a definitive dollar amount for the budget today. But we could, we could put placeholders in there for it. If, if
Yeah.
you guys felt that that was important to have a placeholder for it, then we should put it in there. But then otherwise we can just modify it later in the year or even next year's.
We can always amend the budget.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Can always amend the budget.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. I was, Brian's question was about the ideal world. So in an ideal world, I'd have it all wrapped up for the, the 24 budget, but I, I'm not sure.
That's realistic world right now.
Well, but an ideal world, yeah, I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah.
When you.
When Brian comes back to the real world, then we'll.
Brian, when you talk about fares for the airport service, for example, couldn't you just speak to some of your peers that have implemented that service and kind of do like, what's the high, what's the low of what they're charging? And you know, kind of use their information as your model for that, that part of the forecast?
If I might just jump in a little bit on that, having done a number of projections and
Okay.
the studies along those lines, I think once you try and find what your cost is gonna be, it's much easier to come back and kind of say, this is where a fare should be to recruit.
Oh, yeah.
Until you really know sometimes what the full cost is on.
I only said that.
That's way off board here and how you get.
I only said that because he said something earlier about that something about the hard part would be estimating spares or something. And they just don't reference the fair. Doesn't make me think of it.
I guess my point is fares have a significant impact on what the cost model.
On the cost. That's why I thought you could use that.
What, what I'll probably do is we'll put what our best analysis, our best guess, best option is as staff together. And then I'll have an Excel sheet that you can change the number on the fly and we can look at it on the TV and say, hey, this you know, this is too much. This isn't enough. This, you know, whatever, where we feel like, but we can put some of that together.
Cool.
Yes. I mean, I, you know, this is, this is fundamentally what I was trying to work on today is getting to this point because it makes it much easier to sit down and really get details prepared. You know, we have some, but this will help us move to the next level. But that's all I have for COVID money, unless there's something else we wanna talk about. Put a window in here? Yeah. I mean, the only wall a window could go in is back there and that would remove, require a moving of this big closet, which is not currently part of the plan. So there is, there is no plan. There is currently no plan for a window.
Do a TV screen though, we could put up a, put a view of the outside, right?
I mean, I could, I guess we could put up some TVs to simulate a window. No, I'll steal that, put that in my office.
Okay. So did, so do we have any other discussion on the COVID-19 funds or is that the wrap up of what you have?
That's it for me, but.
I'll, I'll throw one out. We don't have to have no discussion on it, but, um, we're talking about using, use of these funds and, and where we can apply them. I have a stop sort of kitty corner to my house on Lakeshore Boulevard. It's maybe 100 feet, 150 feet from our, our house. And, and, uh, last spring I watched some young kids sit at, and it's just a pole, you know, there's no other facility. It's just a pole with the, with the sign on it. And I watched some young kids sit out there and wait for a bus and pouring spring rain. And I thought there ought to be something a little bit better for, for people when they're waiting for a bus. I mean, he was soaked. And you know, it's 40 degrees and it's raining and I'm thinking, yeah, that's not a good experience for anybody, not a good look. So I'll only throw that out as I mean, I have no idea what I'm saying, other than maybe we should think about some shelters on some of these. And I'm not talking about Taj Mahals. I'm just talking something that allows somebody to get out of the wind and the rain a touch, you know? Um, I'll just throw that out for some thought.
So we, we get, um, 1% of our federal grant every year has to be spent on what's called enhancements, which is things that improve the riding experience. For a while, we were putting all of those dollars into the transit centers, both at Lakeland and at, uh, Wickliffe. Lately, we have been doing shelter projects. Lately, we have been doing shelter projects. Usually they have a more extensive sidewalk component because we found that that's also a pretty significant barrier. But we get, so 1% of our federal grant is $360,000 annually, and that's the federal share. So there's another 20% that goes on top of that. So we have roughly a $400,000 a year program right now to do that. One of the bottlenecks currently is, is staff time. Only because you're usually the type of thing you're talking about doesn't fit in the right of way. And so, you know, there's a lot of time with us and Brandon getting easement negotiated and then managing the construction project. But we are trying to sort of be steady in that implementation process. But that's a great, you know, that is definitely a, a high priority item. With no. Yeah, we actually have, we're experimenting with a new one. So you're used to the kind of the ones you see out front that are, you know, two, three walls and they're a little more complex. We have one that's on order that is a pole with two seats and a little canopy. So it doesn't offer as much protection from the weather, but it is an order of magnitude cheaper and easier to install. So we're going to test it out near a park in Eastlake on Lakeshore and see how well it does. Concerned it doesn't have any sides, but you know, those little buildings unfortunately are like $23,000 before they're installed, so. I often think about that.
Everything you're discussing is all about access to the stops, which is really important because our fixed routes, most buses have become more accessible. Kim, you've told me how you use the fixed routes and the more we can get people on fixed routes, that'll give them more spontaneity in their lives. But they have to be able to get to those stops.
Yeah.
And be safe and dry.
Yeah, I can only, I can, I typically only get on or off in certain places. Uh, because I don't feel comfortable getting on and off at the ones, I just ran the ones on the street for that, for that exact reason.
Ben, is much of that on the capital plan?
Yes.
Okay. There's. Got it. We've got some money already in the capital improvement program that addresses this shelter issue.
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't have specific projects. Sometimes it just has the line item of, of expenditure, but it's.
Great.
Don't talk with the microphone, but here, I completely forget. What I was saying is, is it, would it make sense, considering we're talking about future planning, to also put together a plan that would ultimately make all of our bus stops accessible to people in wheelchairs? And have a shelter at everyone?
We have, one of the things I've talked with my team a lot that we just never have brought forward just for time reasons was to have a bus stop inventory done and then ranking them with ridership in tiers and setting a standard for what a tier one bus stop was, tier two, tier three. It's not financially practical. We have, we have about 700 bus stops in Lake County. Putting a shelter at everyone is not, is just not possible.
Not even over, say, the next 10 years?
No, and, and the reason is because it requires a lot of non-public right-of-way land. And sometimes the landowners, just they are not interested. But I also think from a, from a expense perspective, 700 of those little buildings is a maintenance problem. There's, there's, they are great and having them is great and I, I love them. Having one at every bus stop is just not practical.
How many of the 750 are on public property?
I, the bus stop is always on public property, but fitting a 10 by seven building is not always easy. So I, I don't, I don't know how many, we, I don't know how many of those we could fit or couldn't fit. Those require engineering to, to know that. But I have thought about saying, we're going to look at the system as a whole. We're going to look at every bus stop. Someone is going to go out to every single bus stop, survey it, compare it to ridership, and then categorize them. And like tier one would be that bus stop gets a shelter, real-time information and a bench. Tier two is a bench. Tier three is, you know, I don't know what those would all necessarily be, but it would be categorized and then we would have a sort of target list and goal is how we move forward.
Who would it take to go that far?
To do that type of effort? I'm not really sure. Probably at least a decent amount of money, 700 bus stops with survey. I mean, it would take a while. I, we haven't gotten any further than it as a concept, so I would, I would have to talk to a consultant and ask them or talk to my staff and say, how much time would this take us to do it ourselves? You know, our facilities guys could be tasked with it if we.
I think that's something to think about with all this other stuff we're doing to try to create more access and more spontaneity in people's lives to use the system. Because ultimately there is all, so a concern, how much dialer ride is going to grow with the addition of more seniors over the next decade or two? And that may be something that if there's come a time and now that we have some funding to do it, that you want to look into and come back and chat with us about it.
I mean, we could put some guest lists together and bring them back aboard and see what they think.
And there's a number of asset management firms out there that would do exactly what you described. Or I have no idea what the fee would be, but.
Yeah, I'm confident we could get a consultant to do the work. I just don't have a good, I don't know if that's a $50,000 project, a $200,000 project. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't how much information you want. It's, it's all just a big database.
Right.
All come down to.
Yeah.
Okay, Ben, do you want to move forward with the STS discussion?
Unless anyone else.
Yes, I'm doing the same thing, Donna. I, I missed something and if you don't mind, I'd like to circle back around for just a couple of minutes. When we were talking about the cash projection, one of the things that I should have mentioned and I forgot to and I apologize was that the way that the current form was laid out in form that we showed you, it does not accommodate any expected income over that period of time. It is, it is expense dominated, but not income allowance, if you will. So for instance, we talk about 2024 to 2027 cash capital plan projections. And, and we deduct that, if you will, from the total cash. But during that period of time, we're getting income. But this, this cash balance does not account for roughly, you know, what, $23 million a year, $21 million a year in income that we, that we get. I, I, I think that's a weakness that we probably ought to talk about a little bit at some point, whether or not we're getting a, a true cash balance that, that serves us properly or not. You know, it's, so I'll just, I'll just throw that out there for something that, that perhaps we ought to include in, in, in this report.
That begs the question, how far out can we predict the capital we would have? Would that be for the life of the most recent infrastructure legislation at the federal level? How would that work?
Well, I think what Gary means, so there is grant revenue projections. What Gary's talking about is local dollar revenue projections.
Right.
And that's a function of this system, which is that it's not easy to predict on an annual basis what the cash balance will or won't be because everything flows through the operating budget. This is a system that can be changed for sure. But there is no practical way to make that guess today. Because we don't know how the operating budget will do. I mean, we see it as the year goes on, but we don't know what will end up at the end of the year. Now, we can make some, you know, calculations each year based on how the sales tax is coming in and how it's, how things are flowing. But the weakness, and Gary is correct, the weakness of our cash projections is that it, it, it all is based on how the operating budget does.
So I would, I would define it as more of a financial forecast of one year, two year, three year, four year, which is basically what you're doing when you do a year-end budget. You're guessing at what next year's going to be. But if you're looking at a true financial forecast, there does have to be some allowance for income versus expenditures to know, is our cash growing over the next several years? Or is it, are we predicting the cash is going to go down? Because that could certainly also affect some board members' opinions on what level of new services to commit to.
Yeah, doing a, a a five, like a five-year forecast as an exercise, as part of like a once-a-year activity is no big deal. But to try and have this updated on a monthly basis with a five-year forecast would be a pretty significant, you know, to do a new five-year forecast every month would be a little challenging.
Grants in the purple box in the center. Is that only something outside of the federal grant money or does that include federal grant monies?
That's any grant.
Any grant. Sounds like trying to get.
Just a grant.
Yeah, in, in, in Ben's defense, so to speak, we spent, he spent a lot of time beating me up on this because it is, it's really difficult to get to these numbers. But by the, because you factor in grants and the local versus the, you know, the Fed match or whatever. So that was the reason for me trying to circle back around and throw this up to, for the, for the rest of us to, to talk a little bit about it. It's a complicated number to get to. But are we biasing, the question in my mind is, are we biasing to a, to a heavy use of cash when we don't allow any allowance at all for an income that's ill, that's not defined, you know, and hard to define. It's not, there, there, there's not an easy answer to this, really. But, but the way, at least in my own mind, and Ben, correct me, because he's had to correct me several times in our discussions because I get caught in these loops, but there ought to be a way to offset some of this expense that we're talking about with some anticipated income that we know we're going to get, but I don't know how to get at it. Exactly. Did I, did I say that question right, Ben?
Yeah, I think that's inaccurate. Yeah, and I mean, I understand the desire for that number. It really.
What was it at the end of last year? What was the cash balance carryover at the end of last year? Wasn't it four, six million dollars, something like that?
I, I don't.
I don't remember for sure either, but there was some, should be somewhere in the neighborhood of four million because that's, if you take the COVID money out, that's about where we ended up. Right? So it should be somewhere, some, some portion of four million anyway.
Lisa does her report later this afternoon. We ought to be able to see exactly what, where she's saying we're falling now.
Yeah. I mean, you get a, you get a sort of, as we move through the year, you can see it happening on a monthly basis typically.
End of year is one of the most important numbers really for us.
Yes, yeah, because we, you know, at least always says, you know, expenditures for us are always greater in the second half than in the first half. High true for most businesses. But you know, the, the it's also really hard right now with coming out of COVID and all this weird grant money that got thrown at us. But you know, there, we, we can, trying to, I'm just thinking on the fly, you know, we may be able to do in the budget process, you know, in the budget that Lisa puts together would be the time to say, here's what, if, 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 even if we spent everything, this is what's left over. You know, that should come out. Cause we can, when we put the budget together, we look at like, we look at last year's sales tax, we make assumptions for this year. We'll look at, you know, but expenditures are more fixed because, you know, you guys cap, you know, the org chart caps how many people we hire, you know, it's not going to go above this. So I can, let me talk to Lisa and just kind of see if maybe there's something she's thinking about that I'm not. See if there's a way to kind of project it on a, there is a way to project it. It's just a lot of effort. And I, I understand that it, what you're looking for is more of a monthly ability to see it.
I, I think it's a fair question because it's hard to show expenditures through 2027 with no income offsetting and is cash growing or shrinking? I mean, I don't often see that on the financial statements that come across my desk. It is a little different. Now I understand that my clients aren't dealing with grants though, necessarily.
Well, and it's, she does a five-year projection, does the budget, does.
Usually, yes, we do.
So I mean, that's where it's going to show up, where your expected revenues and the expected expenses are going to show up. And then whatever's left over is going to go towards your cash balance. So you should be able to show.
Yeah.
That you got a cash balance that is accumulating something.
It's easier on an annual basis.
But it has to be on annual basis. That's the only time you really know what the number is.
Well. Yeah, I mean, and the challenge, the, the reason, you know, our system exists in this way, essentially it's saying that operating budget is more important than the capital budget. You know, it's saying we will put service on the road before we will replace a bus. Is, is the way this system works and is similar for our peers, except for people like RTA that have a different capital program. But yeah, I mean, we could do it at an annual, on an annual level, probably with a lot easier. I mean, I, we should have, I mean, we have a five-year projection as part of this budget, so it's, it's in the document I could go back and look at. But trying to do it as part of a monthly analysis, I mean, unless we just keep the one number the same for the whole year.
Well, I guess, I guess the real question is, is I don't, I don't know that anybody wants to make this so complicated that it becomes a, has a life of its own, exactly. You know, becomes a, you know, a Godzilla kind of thing. But there's just got to, common sense says there's got to be some offset that, that, that we ought to be able to see.
It could be an offset or in some, in this period of time, you wouldn't have that, but there could be times that when, when this is happening, where the cash balance is funding the operating budget, where you see it going the other way. That hasn't happened in a while, but it, it's possible in theory. Yeah, I'll, I'll spend some time and see what I can.
That's the only way you can do it unless you have a really high capital expenditures. Just go back and supplement them.
Oh, yeah. So I mean, this, this is a standard way for our industry to do business, with the exception, in, in RTA's case, or in a place where you have fixed guideway or rail transit or something, they usually segregate a percentage of sales tax income to dedicate to their capital fund. Because their capital needs are just totally different, you know? When you're talking about train tracks and, and stuff like that, they will segregate. But most of us that are just buying buses, we don't, we don't segregate a, a portion of that out. We could, that's a process we could do, you know? One of the things that is in the staffing for some of this is, you know, I think we, for a lot of reasons, are, are, I need another person in our finance department. One of them is Lisa's going to be retiring in about two and a half years. I want to get someone in there to start following her. But I wish we did a better job at our capital budget process. This is, I'm a little off topic now, so apologize, but we should, in my opinion, have a capital budget. We have a capital plan. And I'm not saying we need a capital budget for five years, but we should have a capital budget on an annual basis. Because it gets, you know, it's messy. Right now, we show you the capital plan, but let's say we need to buy five computers that should be a capital purchase. Because for the government, a budget is the only place we can spend money out of. So that might be something that should be a capital purchase, but it comes out of the operating budget because that's the only place the board has approved a budget. And I don't want to come to you every time we need to buy a computer that should be a capital expense, but we really should have both. We don't have the manpower right now to manage those two things, so. I think we have a weakness there. And I also was going to, this was actually something I was going to put in my CEO report, which I guess I'll go over real quick. We've been doing some initial evaluation of the, the level of effort required for us to get the Ohio checkbook up and running. I know that's been a objective for, 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 for a lot of you. At a high level, it sounds easy. The Ohio checkbook is designed for county government, which has a statewide unified way of reporting finance. Which has a statewide unified way of reporting finances. It, every county has the same account numbers, they have the same structure, it's all identical. We have. Kind of the transit version of the Ohio checkbook, which is the national transit database that we've reported to for about twenty years. All of our accounts and everything we do is structured for them. And as you can imagine. Two systems do not match. So it's a, Lisa is, I'm not ready to give you a final answer on this, but she has been working on how much effort it takes. To do the monthly report for the Ohio checkbook, we have to basically convert every check we write. Format wise differently than what we do today because of how our account numbers are structured, and she can explain it better than me. It's roughly a day to a day and a half of effort on a monthly basis for us to put all our expenses in the Ohio checkbook and have them be meaningful. So if that's something we want to move forward with, that's gonna kind of layers into the fact that we just don't have the staff capacity to do that today. And, and she's gonna talk about it a little bit. But it's a very complicated process. Um, she basically has to download our accounting into an Excel format and change all of the formatting. To match the county standard of accounting versus what we have to submit to the national transit database on an annual basis. So it's, it's, quite honestly, it's more complicated than I expected. But there are some limitations we're bumping up to in our finance department. Personnel wise, so um. That was sort of off topic, I apologize. Yeah, I, you know, I thought you'd run a report, you'd upload the report, and it would take, you know. Ten minutes, half hour. Unfortunately, that's not the case. And again, I probably am not explaining it as well as she can, but. Any other COVID? Alright. So um.
So last, last call, any other COVID fun questions? Alright, and I think we're good to move forward with STF.
Thank you. Alright, I know the days like this are a challenge when you're not doing this every day like we are, so I'll, I'll do my best to be brief. So STS. Stands for special transportation services. Little bit of history. Prior to two thousand and six. We operated what we called community service shuttles or community service service. Sometimes it was free of charge, sometimes we charged for it, sometimes we traded for it. It typically was provided in an MCI or a dialeride bus. Examples are like senior center groups, shuttles for community events, festivals, leadership Lake County, all kinds of things, so we used to do. A lot of what the federal government calls our charter services. In two thousand and six, the FTA passed a rule that says federal transit or transit systems that have a federal interest. Are prohibited from operating any type. Of charter service, doesn't matter. What it looks like, anything that they put into the category of charter service, we cannot do. At that time, a lot of senior centers purchased buses or cities purchased buses to do their own services. That was okay, um but a lot of times those buses break down and they call us and we're out there rescuing people in the middle of the night doing things that are. Not what we probably should be doing. In two thousand sixteen and eighteen. We replaced our ninety eight and two thousand and four MCIs. And we knew. That they can go more than twelve years. The ninety eights, we replaced in sixteen, they've been on the road for eighteen years. Um, MCIs as a bus kind of category are one of the better built buses, they last well beyond. What the federal transit administration says we have to keep them. And so we got rid of the ninety eights. But we said we should keep the oh fours, because they were placed in eighteen, so they had, they're fourteen years old at the time. Um, when we sold the ninety eights, they sold for about twenty five hundred dollars a bus, much to our dismay and shock. People drove them out of here for twenty five hundred bucks. I, I. We were frustrated, but it was an in-person auction, you know, you get what you get. That's how we have to sell them. But they sold for. So we said twenty five hundred dollars is not a lot of money, should we keep them and try and. Return to some of the roots of Lake Tran that Lake Tran did for thirty years. That's about the same time we sold Atkins Road, so we had a conversation with the board and said, hey, we can keep these buses. We can segregate them and we can provide what we hope to be a sort of self-sustaining charter style service. Mostly oriented at senior centers. So we talked to FTA, we said, is that legal to do that? Is it legal to do what we want to do, knowing that there are rules against it? They said, yeah, you can do whatever you want, as long as there's no federal money in it. We don't, we don't regulate your local use of money. To an extent, that's kind of a loaded question, but in this case. They said, if there's no federal funds in it. Fine. So we talked about it. And we ended up launching it. We internally, me and my team decided that that should really only be available to government and nonprofit agencies. It really shouldn't be us out there trying to market to people and trying to sell this service as a competitive. You know, we weren't trying to compete with local charter companies, you know, we're not trying to compete with Barron's or Lakefront or Precious Card or any of those things. In eighteen is when we sold Atkins. We transferred the seven hundred twenty three thousand dollars into a separate bank account, so STS has its own bank account, operates independently. And we launched it in two thousand and nineteen, we launched it with the four oh four MCIs and a retired dialeride bus. We immediately signed some contracts with local senior centers, some youth camps, and really the one thing. That, that did go from a private charter company to us was leadership, their trips moved to us. Really not a lot of others uh moved over. We have a separate budget from Lake Tran, we charge charter style rates, and the goal from the beginning was to break even. Was always our objective. It was never intended to be a profit center, but. We wanted to be a community service to help local organizations that wanted to pay us, but we can't. Accept the money in some cases, you know, if, if an organization wants to pay us for dialeride, they still can only pay the fare. They can't pay more than that, that's not permitted by the feds. And so STS is the only place that can do certain types of trips that we provide with it. You know, if you want to do something outside of our service area, we have to use STS. If you want to take a, a, an amount greater than the standard fare, you have to use STS, so it has a, a small niche. The problem with our plan was COVID, and so we launched it in nineteen. To get it up and running, and then COVID smacked it straight in the face. We kept paying storage fees for the buses as the buses sat there and rotted, basically not doing anything. And. It just was a challenge, the senior centers weren't taking trips, buses sat around, they didn't do anything. We started running really in earnest again in twenty twenty two. And it started doing relatively well. Uh, since then, the. Financial markets had changed, and so we needed to upgrade or increase fares and, and sort of adjust. We did that this year. But it, i- it was a rough road. So to understand a little bit about what we do, the total STS trips in twenty twenty two was right at two hundred. Um, July year to date, we've done a hundred and sixty three. The primary. Client of STS by a significant margin are senior centers. They contract with us to fundamentally be the city's senior bus. So instead of every city owning their own bus that they use approximately thirty days a year, they contract with us for an annual fee. And we function as their senior bus. In twenty two, it was seventy two percent of the trips, so far this year it's sixty eight percent of the trips, so it is very senior heavy service. The current cities that have contracts with us for STS are Eastlake, Willowick, Perry, Fairport, Madison and Kirtland. Um, Eastlake was the first. I don't know, I have a break scheduled to two fifteen, I'm gonna keep. You go on with the history real quick. But STS, as, as Lane has pointed out, as you have seen in the budget, STS is, is at a crossroads. It, a decision needs to get to, to be made with STS, and there really are two options. Invest in it a little bit. Or shut it down. And when I say a little bit, i- it's really a capital investment. So what we did is, we said, what if? What's going on right now with STS? And the really, the big challenge that we're still being hit with. Is the buses are now twenty years old, well, they're twenty years old next year. The maintenance is extremely expensive. We're having a hard time finding parts. The buses are just, the buses are at, they're beyond end of life right now, you know, they were end of life when we pulled them out of our main fleet. We thought we'd run STS for a couple of years, we'd have a good gauge on how it went after a couple of years, and we'd be able to have some recommendations. It's taken longer than that than we wanted to. Um, so these are the expenses uh right now with the revenue at the bottom. So obviously, it's upside down, it can't, this can't be how we continue. This includes, you know, increased revenue. The one thing that's not in this, so at Eastlake's contract is gonna be renegotiated next year. So revenue is gonna go up again, once we renegotiate their contract, they're one of the largest users, and so that'll make a, a decent dent in the financials. But still, the age of the buses. It just, it can't. It, it's not gonna keep working. I'll get there. Um, if we buy new buses, we modeled this off our current maintenance costs. For uh similar buses, you see about a, almost a thirty thousand dollar drop in maintenance costs. When that happens. If we model everything based on this year. It shows a forty three hundred dollar loss. Keep in mind that Eastlake contract I mentioned, we don't know what that is yet, but that will cover that difference. We, we'll negotiate that contract up more than forty three hundred dollars. So in the event we replace the buses. STS should, if it keeps doing what it's been doing, break even. Sure.
So Eastlake is still paying the pre, the lower rate, because that is the terms of their current contract.
Yes.
So our largest provider is not paying the current cost, they're paying the lower, the lower level of cost.
That is correct.
Yeah, that was fine.
It expires early next year, I don't remember what month. So we will renegotiate that, revenue will go up. It won't go, you know, we're not, their revenue, we're not gonna increase their rate by thirty nine thousand dollars. But it will go up enough that it would cover this number here. Forty three hundred dollars. Yeah. So. STS really to survive, needs new buses. Kind of bottom line. I want to talk about, a little bit about the pros and cons, we internally have talked about, before I came here again, I wanted to give you pros and cons. Should we keep STS or should we get rid of it? You know, my explanation would be. Different if I was just saying, let's can the thing. It connects us to people that don't use Lake Tran normally. Most of the folks that use the senior, senior center service are taking trips. Those are people that are not regularly using dialeride or Lake Tran, there are some, but those are generally different people. We've got some really great partnerships with government aid and non-private agencies. Um, it helps continue to position us as the transportation provider in Lake County. Um, one of the things that I quite honestly didn't. View as important, but my staff really encouraged me to put in here is how much the drivers enjoy providing the service. It's different, you know, you think about they're like NASCAR drivers, they drive in a circle all day, it's nice to be able to do something different. One of the things that's important to me is it, it reduces overall local government expenditures. So every city, all six of those cities owning a bus that sits for. Eleven months out of the year is just not a good use holistically of the taxpayers' dollar, right? It's just not. You know, a bus that sits is also a bus that needs more maintenance. So it really, in my opinion, STS spends. Lake County as a whole, it spends tax dollars more efficiently and more wisely. It also, you know, our brand identity gives us a lot of trust with senior centers and it bridges that sort of gap. Uh, for people who haven't used us yet. Now, cons, it's operating in a deficit, that's not what we thought would happen, it's not what we want it to happen. In this case, the fleet needs to be replaced. Um, and if we shut it down, we would have to, you know, have a conversation, I'd have to have a conversation with all those. Cities and senior centers and say, hey, you know, we're, we're shutting this thing down. This is the timeline. Sorry. Um, there may be some city leaders upset with that decision, but. You know, they face choices like this that they have to make decisions on too. Um, and it does take time internally to manage it, you know, to manage. Two hundred trips a year that are kind of different than what we normally do, there is a staff component that we have to deal with. So. Should we? What should we do? You know, one of the ways we can make it more profitable would be to, to, to operate it more like a traditional charter bus. And less, and rely less on senior center contracts. I'm not sure that's what we want to do. Uh, we could, right now, one of the things we, we don't do, which keeps us. From being an option for a lot of more traditional charter trips is we don't do overnight trips. If you want to go overnight, you need to call a private provider, we're not, we're not interested. And we really don't market the service, we, 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 we market it to the contract people we have relationships with, we're not out there spending a lot of dollars on it. So. You know. Can it become profitable? I think so. I think the, the financial model we did is pretty conservative, and with a renegotiated Eastlake contract. I think it, it will be. You know, one of the things my staff said is, do we want to be? Um, thought that was an interesting comment, is you know, we're not, we're a government agency, we're not a profit, a for-profit business, do we want to have a profit? And then do we have the workforce, you know, I, yes, that we do. So we spent a lot of time internally, because you know, there is also the conversation we had is, you know, how is this? Too far from our core mission, you know, is this, is this adjacent to what we do, is this? Central to what we do. Ultimately, with how significant it is to senior centers, we think that it's. Pretty well aligned with our core business.
Free two thousand and six. When the federal government. Stopped transit from. In their view, interfering with charter bus services and competing against them. Everything in here was part of service for Lake Tran.
It is correct.
And everything in here that we lost as part of that service. Hurt us. Because it took away riders and populations. That were very supportive of Lake Tran. They came out and helped pass levies. And it gave the senior centers a greater ability to serve their clients, and I could go on and on. And the sports express service that was wildly popular, a host of people who never experienced Lake Tran. If nothing else, they did so when they went to the sporting events in Cleveland. And as far as profit. I mean, profit's not a dirty word. We have to profit to some expense, to some extent rather. In order to pay the bills and make it worth our while to, to be able to. Continue this. I mean, my view is, yes, let's do what it takes to keep this going. I think it's a great benefit to the organization.
So. When we had our round table in, in staff discussions about what we should do, we ultimately think. That. W- with how significant the service is to the senior centers. That we should invest in four new buses. We put up to two million dollars, it's, it won't, it won't be that much, but we have to obviously go through a bid process. Seniors are a pretty significant part of our core mission, and, and roughly seventy percent of STS services for seniors. So. I think at a minimum, the service to the senior centers is, is important. With the new rates and contracts, we should break even. The one thing I did throw in here is if, I know there is some sensitivity, and I have it as well. About should we be doing that other thirty percent that is not for a senior center? Which is more of a. Charter style service, you know, if we don't want to do that, then STS would need an annual uh allotment of funds from Lake Tran. And the last thing, I think, is that. One of the things we've been, we wanted actually this year to reinstate Brownston Indian Service with STS. The state of the buses just kind of said to us that we were, we're not comfortable with that at the moment. So if the vehicles were replaced a little more reliable, that might also be a good way to bring in some additional income and leverage the service. But I really would like, you know, to me, this is the board, I, I would love to know, you know, what you guys think.
Why four buses?
Cause that's how many MCIs we have in service, um and in the summertime, they're all on the road. Because that's how many M C I's we have in service. Um, and in the summertime, they're all on the road.
Um. When you say they're all on the road, what, what capacity? Um, you know, what, what's, how, how, how how often are we using all four buses at the same time?
From May through August. Almost every day.
Every day?
Almost every day.
Wow.
Yeah.
Saturdays and Sundays too?
Oh, I'm sorry, not Saturdays and Sundays, every weekday. I'm sorry. And it's, it's the senior centers. They, that is when they are heavy, hot and heavy on their trips. Um.
And those are all day trips? They're not overnight trips?
Correct. We don't, we don't, we refuse to take them overnight.
Um. They go a lot of places.
They go a lot of places. Um, the one difference, so right now there's four M C I's. We would not propose replacing them with like buses. They would be slightly smaller and more inexpensive. So an M C I is roughly, when we bought the new ones in twenty eighteen, they were about six hundred and forty thousand dollars apiece. We would propose buying one of those and then three. I lovingly call them fat dialerides in, it, it with my staff, but they are higher capacity dialeride buses. They're built on a Freightliner chassis with just a larger body, but they are roughly three hundred thousand dollars instead of six hundred. So really the total expense expenditure is probably one and a half million, but we haven't bid any of those things before, so I'm, I, I don't know what the cost will be. Like a thirty passenger.
What's the delivery time on all those?
An M C I's delivery time is roughly a year.
Um.
Oh, wow.
The larger dialeride buses is probably similar, maybe a little less. It's very chassis dependent, so if they have a chassis, it could be three months. They don't have a chassis, you have to wait for it. Uh, so it, it depends on what they have in inventory.
Were we waiting, weren't we waiting on some buses up to eighteen months?
The, the regular dialeride buses, the chassis, yeah, they, they take about eighteen months based on chassis availability. The Freightliner chassis are not as in high, they're not as, man, words. They are not in as high a demand as the Ford ones, so they're a little more available.
So the market we're serving on this one, as we've discussed at length, is Lake County seniors are seventy percent of it.
Yeah.
And then I know you do stuff with leadership like County, United Way, things like that.
Yeah, like uh, Leadership, United Way. Um, the other place we've been doing a lot with lately is A W T. Um, I know, I think it's either, I think it's this week, we're, we're transporting kids to A W T for some kind of robotics thing.
My initial reaction is that Lake Train services senior citizens. I believe it's in our mission statement. Um, I am the economics I don't think are fantastic on it. It's a government agency. We're not supposed to make money, break even. I'd be very happy with. I'm sort of inclined to think it's a good way to go to keep S T S around and continue serving those populations.
I wouldn't disagree with that, other than to the extent to say, um. I get really antsy when we start to compete with private industry. And so I think we would have to, for my comfort level, we'd have to make sure that we're not interfering in private i- industry except to the barest extent. Uh, you know, I, it just, it did, to me, it isn't appropriate for a government entity with all of its financial strength to, to beat up on private industry.
I think that's a fair concern and that's what I
Yeah.
had with the airport service. And the one component of this that gives me comfort is that these senior set us, senior centers, because I remember when you started with Eastlake with Mayor Morley, they had an old bus, like they were doing all these things. I'm telling, I think they were having an issue keeping a driver because it was such a seasonal job. Um, so that gives me comfort. Is we it's the growing it too big is where I get nervous about and maybe not being in overnight trips is the right line of business because I think if you do overnight trips, then maybe the bus has to have a bathroom or something that we don't have that or the capabilities to do that.
I think that the overnight trips also does draw a hard line between us and private companies. You know, that, they do that all the time. And I think us refusing that is a good thing for a lot of reasons. One, for the reason Gary talked about, there are some backend logistics. We don't have the facilities to empty a bathroom. I don't want to deal with that. That's a pain in the rear end, if you will. Um, there's also union work. There's union work rules that become a challenge with people overnight. There's a lot of reasons why overnight, unless we really wanted to do it, I would be generally against. And, and I, I think it also really helps with that because I, I agree with you about the, the private part.
May I, may I just comment something? First of what Gary said and then you and Brian kind of backing up what I'm about to say. This whole bullet, should we continue to expand charter service through S T S? I can't even envision how we would do that without getting the charter bus people down our neck again. If they screamed loud enough, they could mess up the whole thing.
Yeah.
They're a force to be reckoned with.
Well, and we, we shouldn't, you know, if there's a private asset that can do it, we shouldn't do it. You know, we, the reason, you know, if you go back to why transit exists this way at all in the U S is because the private business got out of it in the fifties. That's the only reason we are the way we are, you know, and so we shouldn't be, you know, we should fill a need if one exists, but I don't, I'm not in favor of us putting precious cargo or lakefront or Baron's Bus out of business. That's not, that's not our job.
So then is the next step, you're looking to see if the board is buying into continuing this model to make a proposal at a board meeting for new equipment?
If the board is in favor of what we're talking about today, we would initiate a procurement process for the buses, which will probably take three months in our normal course of business. And so in the if you said, let's do it today, then in the December timeframe, we'd likely be back with a uh, request to purchase buses with all local dollars.
Then are we in essence at capacity then during high season with, with the four buses?
Yeah, pretty much. Depend, we have a fifth bus, which is a retired dialeride bus, which really doesn't need to be replaced right now.
Okay.
Um, so if they want that bus, we have the capacity, but really four is the current limit.
So if other municipalities would want to come for the same service, would we have to then allocate additional buses? To, you know, to, to the service?
We just say, we don't, can, we, we'll work with them to pick a different day.
Okay.
Or something. We don't, uh, you know, the, we pay, we pay to store these buses offsite, which is a logistical challenge. I'm not, we're not interested in more. Um, so there's just a limit to what we can do and it's, it's the four buses.
And then after August, do these buses sit idle for the most part for the rest of the year till?
They get used, they just get used less.
Okay.
Um, you know, the senior centers do trips all year round, but their peak is, is May to August. So they still get a decent amount of use. Um, and the more senior centers sign up, the more we do it. They've done Christmas light tours and all kinds of little, you know, things. So, um, they still get used, just not as much.
Ben? Do you know, do any of the senior centers have charter buses that, that come in and take people on trips to?
Yeah, when they go on overnight trips, they, they charter a private bus.
Okay, I, I know there was one that I signed up for to go to churches around in Cleveland. Does that, was that an S T S bus or was that uh, because that was through a travel group, I thought, rather than organized by mentor. Maybe they used a charter bus. And, and all I'm looking for there is they are using charter buses out of the se- senior centers too, along with what we do.
Yeah, they, the senior center is still charter buses for, like if they go longer distances or overnight. They, they still get used for different types of trips. Yes.
And occasionally the nonprofits, I'm aware they, they will do the same. But the irony of that whole charter bus reg was we weren't exactly competing with them because both senior centers and nonprofits, they didn't have the ability even in two thousand six for all of their programming, which, you know, we're doing a good bit of now through S T S. They did not have the ability to go out and pay market rates for these buses to take their seniors around wherever their programs were. So that was the irony of the whole thing. And we tried and tried and tried to get them to recognize that doing things with nonprofits and senior centers should be exempt in the legislation. And that was an insurmountable fight.
So, I'm assuming that Mentor and Willoughby are the largest senior centers, just naturally based on population. I don't see either of them on the list. Do they provide their own? Or do they, are they exclusively private or is there a reason why they haven't gotten, come, come, come to us?
Willoughby has two buses of their own right now. Um, I've had various talks with Mayor Fiala about if they were interested. They, they haven't been yet. Um, Mentor has one small bus. They operate a slightly different programming uh, system than Eastlake and the other ones. They, they have a much more robust facility and do a lot in-house and most of their trips are, I, I believe overnight where they run charter buses.
Okay, that makes sense. No, they can't, they can't be here, right?
The big, the big nuance to this is that it's, like many federal rules, it is somewhat contradictory. And basically, we cannot store them in our building because it has federal money used in it. If, but we can maintain them here as long as we maintain other things also. So right now we do maintenance for Breckenridge Village and for Giaga. So because we have a broader maintenance program, they are allowed to be maintained here, which is, I understand how stupid that sounds. Um, so, but we can't store them here. So we pay to store them uh, on a storage facility on Blackbrook Road. And we have all this, we, we put this in writing with the F T A to make sure it was acceptable and uh, it's a, we even talked about should, would it be more cost effective to build a small little bus hut like over there to store them? And this is how stupid the regulation is. They said, as long as the land was paid for with local money, yes. But you can't use the same driveway that the transit buses use, even if the driveway is open to the public. And so, we, we, we just kind of abandoned that whole thought process because of how foolish it was, so.
There goes my blood pressure. So Ben, let's, let's summarize. We need four new buses, what you're saying.
Yes.
That's going to cost a million and a half dollars.
Roughly, yes.
Roughly. How long do those buses last? Ten years?
Uh, the M C I bus should last us fifteen to eighteen. The larger dialerides should be at least ten years.
Okay, well, just in rough numbers and let's say, uh, it's uh, average of twelve years, whatever. Even fifteen years, that's a hundred thousand dollars a year. Are you going to be able to charge an additional hundred thousand dollars a year to uh, at least break even? I don't see that. That's not going to happen. I think this is economically not feasible to continue this um, service. I just don't see it. I mean.
Well, if we put that standard against the rest of the service, we're out of business.
The comment was essentially, uh, most bus service, transit service is subsidized. This, this would be a subsidized service as well. Right, is that fair, Don? Who's going to subsidize it? Well, yeah, Lake Train. Like, like we subsidize ridership now. Right? I mean, we don't, we don't charge full fare for anything, if we, correct?
Correct.
So, so we're subsidizing every rider every day, three hundred sixty-five days or whatever the right number is. Uh, we would, the, the real issue here, I think, is do we, do we want to subsidize this as well? Really? I mean, that's really the question.
Yeah, I think is this part of, is this part of our mission is, is what I think we're, it's, it's not about, is it going to be run as a profitable entity? I think it's more, is this part of our mission as an organization? Uh, and then I think the other part is that it's not subsid, we're not then getting subsidized by the federal and state government. This is something that we're doing out of our own, you know, pockets.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we looking to make a motion at this point or is this just discussion?
That's a fair question. Ben, what are you looking for at this point?
I mean, we really need
Are you looking for a vote to have direction?
Can we make a motion and hit this, Brandon?
Yeah. I think, I think it would be, it would be beneficial in the new business of the board meeting to have closure on this item one way or another, whether it is to keep S T S and invest in it or to shut it down. So I would, in an id, in an ideal world, there would be a motion made in new business at the board meeting about this topic.
Great. Okay, so that wraps up the S T S discussion.
One, one last question on that.
Yes.
Um, would we know what that one point five to one point seven five, whatever the number is for the, the new buses? Would that would look like from a depreciation schedule standpoint over fifteen years, you said, I think?
Um.
Would, would we be able to do that? Can you model that or is that too difficult?
We don't, we, as a government agency, we don't really, I can, uh.
Based upon the price of zero, so probably a straight line.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's straight, it's, it's a straight line. I was, I had to think about it for a second.
What you do, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, that's government speak.
Yeah. Sorry, it took me, it took me a second, you know. Okay.
Try a little bit.
I would suggest we have our break.
Uh, that's what I was going, um, okay, everyone, let's, uh, now that we finished the discussion on S T S, let's take a break and then when we come back, we will, um, go right into the rules and regulations.
Just for ease, I'm going to leave the YouTube up right now, so if you have your mic on.
It's two twenty-seven. Let's reconvene at two forty.
Oh, you just stop it right now. So, in my defense. The only thing I could see in, hey, just stop. That was a little embarrassing. Well, in our own little world. So they're hedging their bets. That's interest. Okay, Bob, you know, you're making a million dollars a year. No, you go back to. Elaborational.
Hi, I don't know.
So I love. Okay. Think about what you do is. You bother. Comes to care of it, yeah. The two would be back together and they figured it out. Putting this to each other. Now you follow. What do you get in the zone? Well, they clearly, uh, they have a different view of the best. Um. Oh, I feel, I don't, I don't dislike. No, I didn't.
Did you get your documents?
Yes, I did.
Good.
It takes, uh, um, twelve minutes to get from here to my house. Actually, uh, yes. But I'll tell you what, the other day when I was getting on ninety, you know, from forty-four here. That's, that's crazy. The trucks are going.
Oh, yeah.
I seriously hit a hundred.
Um, yes. No problem.
Trying to get out in front of a truck that was barreling along at eighty miles an hour.
Speeds are incredible.
I know.
You know. Let's just say, you know what, I'll see you later. In the slow lane, I'm in people's way.
I know. I, I, I set mine that if it's seven sixty, I set it at seventy, and they still get past.
Still get low.
Yeah.
Even in the slow lane, you know. Hey, go to Detroit. Yeah.
All right, maybe the same, probably the same.
Friend of mine's brother is, Michigan State.
I was getting on, I was gonna merge and here's his truck, should be going sixty, sixty-five. That's what the fuck I can get.
Ben, can I scoot behind you?
Sorry.
And, uh.
You?
If you're watching this, we're going.
No, no, I didn't even look. That's why I can get drunk again. Then I looked down. One, zero, zero. I don't think I've ever.
All right. Let's reconvene at two forty-seven. I'm gonna start off by passing the meeting over to Ben.
And I'm gonna play hot potato and pass the meeting to either Chuck or Brandon to do a rules and regulations wrap-up. I don't know who wants the potato, but.
Uh, I guess I could start, Brandon, that's okay with you. Just from the standpoint that we had those couple of discussions about the, uh, the bylaws in our meetings and since I had started some, some of the visions to it and all that, I, I continued on with it. And then I shared those with, um, with Brandon. There's final input on the indemnification clauses. Um, I think Brandon brought up one question that probably needs to have a little bit of discussion. That was whether or not we wanted to change from general manager to CEO. And, uh, anything else from that? I think Brandon, maybe you wanna touch base on some of those items?
Sure. So, it, the board will recall that in going over these things, what, what I did was Chuck and I had kinda made some revisions here. I sent everybody a draft a short time ago. Um, the, the question was in part really about how the board, you know, going from general manager, CEO, that no big deal. I, I guess just some consistency in what the board preferred to do, for instance, when it also refers to the Secretary Treasurer. Um, was a member who had asked me if that, if the intention in these rules and regulations initially and or if the board's intention and, and, you know, doesn't matter to me, if, if that's somebody, if there should be a check and balance, for instance, if that's Lisa. And, and someone had asked, well, was this previously, it was previously in the rules as chief fiscal officer? Is there a difference there, or is that the board want both of those titles to be held by Ben? That's really the, the question on that, Chuck, if I'm understanding you correctly, do we want it to be CEO slash Secretary Treasurer? Or, or, I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong word here, I'm reading the old ones. Or if you want that to be two separate people as the Assistant Secretary Treasurer? Yes.
I thought under the state of Ohio, um, something in our C that it designated it as the same person.
I'm not familiar with it making it the same person. I mean, there, it talks about that person being bonded and being a financial officer. Um, if, if there's a code provision on that, I haven't, I haven't seen, I don't know if you saw that, Chuck.
I, I did not see that one either, Don.
Yeah.
And you, you both looked under the transit?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we.
Like the creation?
Yeah.
I don't mean to sound insulting.
No, no, no. We might look to him first. Yeah.
We've read it many, many times and debated it a number of times.
Yes, well.
Okay.
That's why we say that, yes.
No, and that, I, I put a note in the side if everybody saw what I sent and just because that was brought up as a question by a board member as to, you know, who or what that should be or what the clause were. That's, that's up to all of you, if, if, you know, you can do it either way you please.
Up just today, I am the Secretary Treasurer and Lisa is the Assistant Secretary Treasurer. And that's what allows us to sign the checks.
But you're also the CEO or general.
Yeah, it's, it is common in the state for the, the general manager, CEO, whatever the title is, to also be the Secretary Treasurer. That's how all my peers are. Uh, for me, but it's, but it is up for.
For what it's worth, a couple of the, uh, nonprofit boards that I've been on required the, uh, at a certain threshold, a board member signature. Just as a, a check and balance, you know, who would take it? And I don't remember what the numbers were, you know, ten thousand, fifty thousand. I just, I don't remember what it was exactly, but, uh, for instance, at Lake Erie, when I was co-chair of the board, anytime that they had a check above whatever amount it was, management had to present it either to me or the other co-chair for a, for a second signature. And it was just a way to make sure that the board was aware of any larger, uh, checks going on.
Did you have, um, special requirements on what passage of resolutions for expenditures over our case twenty-five thousand?
Well, I don't remember how the United Way treated it. It was too long ago. Uh, I, I think there was from memory, but I'm not, don't quote me on that. Uh, at college, that was, um, not as clearly defined.
Okay.
It was more of a, this is a big one. We probably ought to get a counter signature. There may have been a number. I don't remember it.
Well, he, we give him approval to spend money is over twenty-five thousand, so. We already kind of, my mind, we're already.
Yeah, this is another way to do it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that was to Chuck's point, that's, that's kind of it. And then the idea was, if I recall, uh, a discussion with my predecessor at one point in time that they found it, the business board at some point in time found it a little bit cumbersome to have the president always coming here to sign things. And so that's why that was instituted and that's why, you know, Chuck, as he mentioned, has got that twenty-five thousand dollar limit anyway. And that I, I defer to you guys, if you were, that was told to me by somebody else. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but.
That would make sense to me.
Sounds right.
Becomes difficult.
I mean, I, I know you probably would enjoy traveling here every day if that's.
Like you don't have anything else to do.
I guess does that entertain any other questions or do you want to explain the den- indemnification a little bit?
Yeah, I, we've talked about the indemnification so that everybody's aware. I provided everybody the certificate of insurance. Ben and I had reached out to O trip to get some guidance from them on what coverages are available. You'll recall that, uh, under the revised code, the board can go out and buy its own insurance policy. Not that you need to or that you want to. And so thankfully for all of you, O trip provides policy coverage for all of you, any volunteers, Lake train or otherwise. So you are protected under that policy. In spite of that, I, I think everybody had agreed in prior discussion that it's beneficial just to have indemnification language in there. It's helpful when you get a new board member and say, hey, here's our rules and regulations. And that board member says, oh, good, I'm indemnified. So there's not a fear that they're going to be subject to, to suit personally. Now, you all could still be subject to suit personally. There are law firms out there who would find folly in that, wrong or, or right or otherwise. So, you know, the indemnification language, just to put that in there and also to make it known that, you know, you guys have that backstop. I think, you know, that's, it's kind of a no brainer, easy thing to put in there. But again, that, that's up to all of you. There's no, um, yes, Donna.
I thought we were told we were indemnified by O trip.
You are.
That's what she, he just said. So we're not talking about something in addition.
Oh, no, I'm just saying that the, the language in your rules and regulations states specifically that you are indemnified and protected.
And, and if there's.
So is there any reason why we would not want that language?
I don't think so, no. I just think it's helpful for all of you and helpful for any new board members as they come on to see that and say, oh, good, okay.
Brandon, I wasn't, I wasn't really able to read all of the indemnification clauses. The, the alternative one that you gave us, is there a big difference between the two?
It's really the wording and it's more to paragraph form. I think the one that, that I kind of threw in there was a little more succinct and kind of had some bullets, which followed this a little bit better. But, yeah, I just wanted to give you guys some different options in the event you wanted to consider it. I don't know if anybody reviewed that or has any questions, happy to go through it. I mean, I think the one that we have in there is pretty, uh, you know, i- it's beneficial and conclusive as it is.
So what would be your thoughts of proceeding forward?
Yeah, I would recommend keeping that in there, um, the indemnification. When I can move down to, we can kind of continue going through it. There's only a couple of things you'll note. I mean, one of the things I changed, just to be clear, so everybody understands, I, I don't want to there be any confusion, but forgive me. The section seven under article two of officers, you'll note in section seven, I changed that the president is the statutory agent. That's the proper term for that as opposed to the chief officer or otherwise. That just means that the president's the one who accepts, uh, service for anything. Kim knows, so if there's, there's a suit or anything filed, it has to be served upon the president. That's common in any organization, L L C, S corp, C corp, or whatever it is. That's, so I just changed that to statutory agent. That's the term that we use.
With that term of change since two thousand and one or something.
Probably in the, in the advent of some, the LLCs and everything else being different. I'm not sure why any, you know, it said chief office. I think that's what it said, doesn't, you know, you know, the chief office. Oh, yeah, but.
Yes, so it's anyway, it's a, it's a change just to keep up with the.
Right, correct. Nothing, nothing substantial changed at all. It's just the terminology. And then, um, as we get to, uh, just one point to clarification on that. The, uh, orange paragraph was meant to replace the one that was highlighted with all the changes in it. Just to give you the brush or give you the final reading on that one. Notice under that section seven, there was two paragraphs there. Look, they were duplicates.
Yeah, well, my, my friend out like white soul. I was actually gonna ask that question. I know one of these was supposed to be the right color, but I don't have the color.
Okay, well. Yeah, the second paragraph.
Second, and the only other, uh, change in there was, and I think just to make it a little bit easier, since we have a chief executive officer, you'll know we just made a chairman of a board as opposed to chief executive officer of a board. And then getting down to,
interrupted for one quick second. So one of the topics that's come up to me multiple times, um, by various board members is what is Ben's title? Is it general managers, a chief executive officer? So in all of these documents, it seems like we'd be changing his title to chief executor officer. Cause in the current document, it is general manager. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That was my intention when I was doing it, so. Again, we didn't fully discuss that in any of the other meetings up at, so if someone has objections to making that change, then they should voice that at this time.
Well, I think if there's any time for discussion, I think now's a good time if anyone would like to chime in one way or the other.
I'll start. We didn't exactly have a big discussion about it by my rec- recollection, but we have commented in here many times that when we did the C E O search, when Frank Kowski retired, you put it out for general manager through your LinkedIn. You got everybody who looked, had experience at McDonald's and Burger King. And the industry has gone the direction of sometimes I've seen general manager slash C E O, but largely it's CEOs in the title because they had the same problem. General managers conference, they were getting lower level ops people instead of the chief officers of the transit system. So they've pretty much gone to C E O as well.
Is C E O reflected in his con- in your contract? Just for consistency purpose. I mean, whether general manager here and C E O there, I mean, they ought to be the same, right?
Both general manager and C E O in his contract, yes. Those changes, I, I don't know. Again, I can't speak to the history, but when I came on board, Ben has been referred to as chief executive officer. So the agreements I saw that were in place referred to him as such. The only thing that did not have a change is the rules and regs that I've seen.
And I think if we're gonna clean it up now is the appropriate time to clean it up or make it official. And Ben, I'm sure you would agree since this title that we've been using that that's the standard in the industry for someone in your position.
Uh, yes. I will remain neutral on all other items. You can call me whatever you like.
Okay.
Yes, really. You're my boss, you can call me whatever you want.
Okay, so that makes sense on the G M to C E O. And then the indemnification, we're good adding that in. And then I will stop derailing your smooth moment.
Oh, no, no, that's perfectly fine. Um, the only other, you know, if we get to article five fiscal matter, section one, what that specifically states in the prior version stated contracts shall be entered into in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Ohio revised code. There was an addition of in the federal transit administration. Kind of like Ben said earlier, and I, I discovered the same thing when you, when you look at the F D A. F T A prescribes just like O dot, right? If you're gonna take their money, use their grants, you've got to do X, Y, and Z. My suggested change there was because we don't have all of our contracts. For instance, if we're hiring a snowplow contractor, well, we're not going to necessarily comply with F T A if we're not getting F T A funds to hire a snowplow contractor. My, my thought there was, I think what we should state is contracts shall be entered into in accordance with the applicable provisions of the revised code as it states. And then a second sentence after that, contracts pursuant to which grant funds provided by the federal transit administration and or the Ohio department of transportation are provided, shall be entered into according to the applicable federal and or state provisions specifically provided or mandated. I just think if you, if you leave that as it is now within the federal transit, I think you get into a bit of a problem where, for instance, if I'm drafting a, a snowplow agreement or a landscape or something of that nature, I'm not necessarily going to put in all the F T A provisions in there. And I think that contractor might look at it and go, what, what is this? And then I don't want to create additional legal costs with their counsel and going back and forth if it's not applicable. But that's just a, a suggestion.
The other option would be just to eliminate the federal transit administration.
Sure. I didn't, yeah, thanks.
So it'd just be the short.
That's the easiest.
Sentence.
Yeah. So I over lawyer that a little bit. You're right.
I guess from my perspective, to keep it the simplest, it would be just to leave the, take out the federal transit authority and or administration and just leave it as per the Ohio advisory.
I agree with that. I, I think by putting that and in there, it, it kind of demands some sort of federal transit authority allowance in a contract.
Okay.
In my way of thinking. So eliminating it altogether, I think is appropriate.
Keeping, keeping the bylaws a little bit simpler in that too is, is fine, I mean. Okay, that good for you?
One second, I just started editing and something switched here. Sorry. Okay. Um, and then the only other changes I really made, if you noticed, was just, um, try to keep everything kosher with what it is and consistent. So we refer to chief executive officer. By also, there were some sections in here still had Lake Tran in all caps. We know that earlier in the preamble and otherwise, we refer to it as the authority. We change it to say Lake Tran hereafter further identified as the authority. So those are really the only changes. And then a couple of times where we, we just need to be clear if we're talking about the authority or the board. Well, they're not necessarily the same, so there was a change there. Article six for meetings. Uh, what we have currently is, um, the five thirty P M. I don't know when we last met at five thirty P M, but that's a simple change if the board wants to make it four P M as we meet.
Do we even have to have that detail other than to say meetings on the third Monday or fourth Monday? Do we have to say five thirty?
Yes, I know, but we should. It's, it's, it's better just for sunshine laws, public, all those things, it just, it's easier.
Okay, but if we, for instance, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, this is more, I'm trying to understand. So our current says we're gonna meet on the third Monday at five thirty, neither of which we do. So does that somehow invalidate us? And our actions?
No, because Ben and the staff here publishes the meeting time and notice ahead of time. And it's not a violation then to, to not follow your rules and regs.
This is nothing then, really.
Yeah, if we didn't publish that, if they didn't put notice out to the public and everybody ahead of time and then we didn't meet at that time, well, you could argue, all right, wait a minute here. Then we might get somebody like we know who would create an issue, but otherwise, no.
We do approve, uh, any account, January.
Okay.
Yeah. But, uh, uh, if, if everybody likes, I can make that change to four P M. And or, you know, I think it's a no brainer, yeah, the fourth.
We have, we have done that for at least ten years, so.
Can't get too can't get at this too quickly, you know?
And then a couple of other changes in that same section, you'll notice in section four, uh, just cleaned up some language. I think rightfully so, we got rid of telegram and put it in electronic means. Uh, again, just trying to stay current with the times. So.
Like previous comment.
Right? Yeah. Yeah. Um, so that's really about it. Nothing other, uh, nothing much substantive other than the things we've discussed, um, previously.
So what's the next step?
I have a couple of questions if I could.
Great, questions are great.
Okay. And, and some of these are just, I I'm not a legal lease kind of guy, so I, I get lost in some of these things. So I, if, if there's a simple answer, don't laugh too hard. Article three, section one. I, I, I'm having a hard time following this because it starts out saying the board can employ and fix the compensation of consulting engineers, superintendents, managers and other such in other engineering, construction, accounting, financial expert and other employees. Now I read that sort of implying that everybody above is an employee. Am I, I guess I'm probably interpreting this differently than anybody else, but. It, it just, it seems awkward to me because it, the, by putting other employees in there, it sort of implies that everything that comes before it are employees, but we don't employ a consulting engineer. So it kind of starts off saying contractor kind of people, people would contract with, and then we morph into this employee. It seems awkward to me.
Yeah, I, maybe the, you know, the, the idea there is the removal of other. Uh, so you can employ, you know, can do that and other employees or I'm sorry, and employees. But yeah, it's, it is a little bit convoluted.
Could that be reworded in some way to make it clear based on what we do now? That language has been in there since the beginning and it's confused everybody, not just us.
Okay. Yeah, I, 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 I can circulate a proposed revision if you'd like, or it can, if everybody looks at it now and says, hey, if we remove the word other, then maybe that.
That works for me.
Okay. Just removing other. Okay.
Okay, and then if I could, next question for me was, uh, article four. I believe in section one. I believe the, the first word, uh, second word, the president, I think that should be the board. Uh, section, article four, section one. The first line says the president may establish from time to time. I think that should read the board because then if you read down further, it then talks about the president taking action to correct what he already did or did not do. Am I misinterpreting that?
No.
And then if you look at section two or section three, it's the same kind of process. The board starts and then the president makes a corrective action.
Yeah, i- in essence, it's arguable that a president of an organization can essentially create a committee, right? If there's a discussion, the president says, okay, we're gonna form a committee on this and then the board can appoint members to that through that. So the president is in a sense making a motion, if you will, that the board then acts. But you are, you are perfectly well, you know, if you want to change it, that the president and or the board, or just make it that the board may establish because you're gonna go through the same process either way. So the elimination of the word president there and, and inserting board instead may be perfectly fine.
Well, the reason it's redundant to me is because then the next sentence says if the, if the board fails to appoint, which to me says the first sentence should have been the board because then the president can go ahead and name.
Essentially what it's saying is the president may establish. The president may come to the board and say, I'm going to, uh, suggest that we establish this committee, a technology committee. And then the board, subject to the president making that motion, would then appoint members to that committee. So the argument there is the president is establishing it and the board can establish its own committees too by motion otherwise, right? But that's my, my, my idea is when this was drafted, that was their thought. It's giving the president that power to establish it, but then the board, and you're right. And if you look down again, section three, you know, that's where it's almost a little bit more confusing. The board may from time to time create additional committees.
Right.
So it's, you know, i- i- it's essentially allowing both processes. So you've got, you know, it's not necessarily in conflict with each other, but you're. So you've got, you know, it's not necessarily in conflict with each other, but you're allowing both, both to happen.
Okay.
So it's up to you, again, to, to clean that up or leave as it is, it provides committees to be formed either way.
I choose to ignore it.
And I, I, Chuck, I don't remember if you and I talked about it, I feel like at one point we did, and then maybe we didn't get back to it, because I think we both found that was.
Just to refer back here, is I had eliminated that third paragraph in my original document, but then to some of the compensation that.
Okay.
The assets, I've ignored it just.
Yes, we've talked about that, and I remember you eliminated it because we've never done it though.
If I, if I may, my, my interpretation really was before. Section one, we gave the authority to president to establish committee. If you heard us talking about something. And said, you know, that really needs to go to a committee, and Gary, I'm going to assign you special projects coordinator, projects. Committee chairman, and, uh, I want. Him, him and him to be on the board or the committee with you, then that's, that's his, his authority. But we as a board then should also have authority to say, Brian, we think that this ought to go to a committee. And, and that, that's, that's how I interpreted the two paragraphs, and the third one I really was, it's kind of unclear about, so.
And that's how you've interpreted is pretty much what has happened over the entire time I've been here.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the experiences and boards I've had, that's the case.
So why don't we just, why can't it just say, why can't all three of the sections start with the president and or the board? The president and or the board. And all three, I think that's, so then you're covering all of your bases and it's consistent, which it looks better, which it looks better in legalese if things are consistent.
Isn't it clear if we. Separate that into two sentences, the way Chuck just did?
Yeah, I, I, I would say, Kim, that we want to keep this, give the president complete authority on one side of it. Then this is a special advisory committee, so it's.
Yes, so the president is, cannot create special advisory committees, because that's how I would read that.
Further down, it allows him to do that.
That's what I'm saying, that's, then you're creating an inconsistency.
Yeah. Well, the board would create it, but then he has the authority to appoint people to it if we can't agree on who's going to be appointed to it. But that's the way I interpreted it. Sorry for ringing it up.
No, I don't.
No, it's a great discussion. Because if you remember, we had the conversation one time about having standing committees, and that's where standing committees should have been in here too, if we would have wanted them. But we chose not to, so that language is, was taken out from the original. Um, document too that was produced.
Okay. Okay.
I think the board presidents got to have. The ultimate authority, but then give the board some authority if. He's not doing it, they can establish an advisory committee.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Well, and, and. Special advisory committees typically, as you'll note in here, will have other. You know, members from the outside public or otherwise, or even within Lake Tran, some board members, so a special advisory would be. You know, getting a bunch of engineers or architects to look at something for us, be, you know, if that was decided, so. It's, I, whatever.
That is an important piece of the board president's. Power and responsibility. To be able to have that. Like first and foremost, and yet. To make it a little more democratic. The board does have a shot at something too, to establish. Some sort of committee if they feel the need. And. We got a renegade president who doesn't want to do anything, which, Brian, I'm not speaking to you, I'm just trying to make my point by example.
Well, are we, to put that slightly different way, and are we missing any? Authority that the board should have, by the way, this is worded, and based on what I'm hearing, we're not.
Not, okay.
So I, I think I withdraw my question.
Well, valid. But it's, it's a good question. I guess it begs the question, then do we want to have it say the president and or the board? President has the authority and the board has authority. I'm, what I'm saying is, in a sense, I, I'd be happy to clean this up. And send it back to everybody. Yeah, I'm not going to change any of the. You know, the intent of it, but if, if, if everyone would like it to be.
My concern with the and or is that. It's not clear enough. That. The board president has the power. Not solely his, but first and foremost his, and then that we as a board. And also step in and create the committee as well. I mean, in essence, that's how the process has worked. But there, that it is separated, not in one sentence.
I think, I think it says that, though. I think it's clearly that we are allowed to do that.
Right.
Yeah, let me, let me ask this question. Does anybody see a? Concern. That is not being covered under this.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I just, I just thought it was awkwardly worded, but, but I don't.
Sometimes legalese is, but.
In my opinion, but I don't think we're missing any, that was my question too. Are we missing being granted some authority, and I don't think that's the case.
Okay.
Okay.
So I, I'm in agreement with that.
Got it, yeah.
Okay, so it looks like.
I just want to make sure that. Whoever's the board president has. The ability.
He does.
To do the appointments without getting into an argument, but. Somebody else sitting here. Wants something different and. We have the authority and can overrule you.
That's clear, I believe.
I do too.
It's in here.
So no. But yes. Okay.
Okay, if I can continue to confuse the crowd.
Sure.
Article five. Section four, what's the granting authority? I'm sorry. I, I missed that, towards the bottom of section four, the last sec, third last sentence.
And it, it's capitalized, what it really is, is it's essentially referring to FCA and ODOT or any granting authority.
Oh, I see.
That, it's, it, it doesn't necessarily beg to be a capitalized term because we don't necessarily define it. I had issues with that too, but it's, unless anybody has a specific objection to it, it's, it's kind of harmless and it, it really. Because we don't know, you know, there could be other sources of grants or things.
Gotcha, okay.
What section was this if we're looking in?
Bottom of section five.
Thank you.
Second, uh, section, bottom of article five, section four.
Article five, it's page fourteen if you're looking at your paper.
And it refers.
Fourteen.
Granting authority, which is cap, capitalized, and I just was curious who that was. I, I got myself turned around on it. And. Just one other thought in that paragraph too, we did change. That Ben has to present the budget from four to five months ahead of time to two to three. So that just kind of goes along with trying to get contracts and get things in order, people getting their requests in. That's what we've been doing, so. Sorry. And then in article six. Um, a maj, section one, a majority of the board constitutes a quorum.
Yes.
And, uh, don't, don't we need to define under what conditions? In other words. I think we have treated, if, if this was a board meeting right now, then with the, what the, seven of us, then four would be a quorum, right? But. You could read this that says, well, there's nine of us on the board, and so you have to have five. Before you ever get a quorum. It doesn't define. It's, it, shouldn't it say something about the attending members or something like that in order to establish what a quorum would be? Because that quorum number moves depending on how many people are in the meeting, doesn't it not?
Yeah, and I think that was the intent of this language, was to allow businesses to still be conducted. And, and in a sense, provide for that. It is not the best. Um, I, I have some other boards who have very similar language, and I'm, I'm not a huge fan, but I think what it's trying to say is. A majority of the board constitutes a quorum, so if you've got that majority here, then you have a quorum to continue on to do business.
But it doesn't say here, a majority of the board is, our board is nine members, so a majority to get a quorum would have to be five, under all conditions, is the way I interpret that.
And that is how we've operated with all due respect, Mr. Dines.
Unless there's been an, a vacancy for extended time, because the commissioners haven't appointed. So there are times that it has been less than five.
But our rules say that our board consists of nine members. And that here it says, a majority of the board constitutes a quorum, therefore the number is five, under all conditions, that's the way I interpret it. Under all conditions, you'd have to have five people to have a quorum. I mean, what, unless I'm missing it, it seems to me that you have to define. Under what condition you're going to call a quorum.
Here's the problem, you could have. You know, name your number and then take a quorum from that. If five people show up, what's your quorum?
Still five, according to.
And I.
I agree with you, but if it's a lesser number that shifts around from meeting to meeting. You could have.
Let's let Brandon, he wants to answer the question. There was a time, a long time ago, when we started working on these, where I had provided some different language to define quorum, and I'll just read it to you real quickly. What I had, what I proposed was, a majority of all members of the board shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. But a lesser number may adjourn any meeting. The affirmative vote of a majority of the directors, trustees present at any meeting shall be. I got, shall be necessary to adopt any resolution, motion, or to conduct any other business may come before the board at the meeting. No vacancy in the board shall impair the rights of a quorum to exercise all rights and perform all duties of Lake Tran.
That's, to me, that's much clearer. I mean, because what you're saying is at, present at that meeting.
Majority of all the members of the board, yeah, shall constitute for the transaction of business, right?
So you have, you have to make it condition, uh, uh, conditionally conditioned, if that, if that's the right way to put that. Because that quorum number is going to move.
Sure, and then that's why we have the affirmative vote of majority of the directors' presence at any meeting shall be necessary to adopt a resolution.
So, so what's the language this way?
Probably, yeah.
I'm being serious.
It's true.
Because there used to be a committee, the whole meeting for the board, because people would be like, hey, I volunteer, I don't have so much time. So that's the genesis of it. I'm not saying that's right, but. But is there a different standard for a community board versus a, a municipal board versus a? Private board?
Sorry. I was going to ask to make sure that language doesn't conflict with committee meetings. It shouldn't, because we're, this is, I mean, as far as committees, that's a bit of a separate deal, but no, I, I mean, I think that's. This particular language is, is generally more standard and, and. You know, quorum language, if you will, for lack of a better term. I, ours is a little bit confusing and convoluted when you read it.
Is there a way you can straighten it out so it's not confusing and convoluted? And if I make my point that I was going to make a minute ago. When. I had a situation. Twenty years ago, and it's not to say at some point it couldn't happen again. A board came in and fired legal counsel. And. There were, I believe, five people in the room. And. The one they were really going after was Frank Polivka, our first general manager. That. Kind of a situation should not be allowed to happen. I mean, I understand the point going from, you know, meeting to meeting, regular business. But there can also be some pretty serious problems resulting from. Basically a floor, a floating quorum number from meeting to meeting. And there have been times, like even say during a winter snowstorm, where we have not had a quorum of five to conduct business, where they've just canceled the meeting. So I think we need to sort this out, because there can be some serious consequences. Is there a way? To protect the organization in?
Yeah, and to your point, that's where the language that, you know, that I just read, you know, you, it does provide for that. A majority of the directors present at any meeting shall be necessary to adopt, so if you have a lesser number. I think the intent of most organizations and boards is, if, if they don't have that, then you either have a meeting that, you know, you got to come back and do things the next time, and, and, you know, if Lake Tran has something they need to execute that meeting and resolve, then. You know, you're, you're put into kind of purgatory, at least for a while, so, but I, this is just. Whatever you, whatever this board pleases to do can be done.
The language currently is a majority of directors at a meeting.
It currently states, a majority of the board constitutes a quorum. The affirmative vote of the quorum is necessary for any action taken by the board.
So you feel that requires five in order to do a vote?
Well, if, if we take it literally, a majority of the board, so if you've got five members here, that's then a majority of the board, and that constitutes a quorum. So the affirmative vote of the quorum is necessary for any action. So, yeah, you could have. A limited number in voting and carrying on and transacting business.
So long as there were five in the room. Yeah, then. All right, that's not perfect, but at least the majority of the directors is still there.
Well, and, and that language I read to you. In a sense, says very much the same thing, it just spells it out a little bit to try to provide some clarity. By saying, a majority of all the members of the board shall constitute a quorum. So again, it's the same language.
Okay.
For the, but, but it states for the transaction of business. But a lesser number may adjourn, right? So people, that's just common language and common knowledge. People leave, you just put that, or you could still adjourn, so that way the meeting is not. You know, continued, so you're at least able to adjourn, so three or four people leave, the remaining members can adjourn. And it doesn't just continue in perpetuity until everybody gets together again, so that's why that's there. Then it states the affirm, I'm sorry, the affirmative vote of a majority of the directors present, a present at any meeting shall be necessary to adopt. So it's the same language, it just clarifies what we say now and trying to spell it out a little bit more clearly. So again, it's, you know, if there's five members here. This, this proposed language that I did a while ago still says three vote, then that's the way it goes.
That's what I was looking for, the five members.
His lan, I think that his language is much clearer, so I would definitely say, go with that. I mean, it, it says the same thing, but yours is. A little bit clearer and not as awkwardly worded, so. I would go with that, that would, in my opinion.
So what you're asking, it, it still reflects exactly that.
Okay.
There's no change in.
I just want very, very clear on that.
To me, it makes it perfectly clear. You know, there's no arguing about it at that point. You, if you, if you can argue that, hey, there's three of us, therefore, two of us are the quorum, you know. There are all kinds of mischief can take place, and that's exactly what you don't want to have.
And I've experienced. I've experienced that mischief.
We all have in various meetings, so. Uh, that, that's what led to my confusion on this is.
Thank you for.
You, you can't, we can't let ourselves be driven into the position where two people. Make a decision as, in terms of. Firing Ben or, or whatever, I mean, that's just inappropriate. In my mind.
Right.
Or shutting down the whole system, something equally crazy.
Okay, so, so Brandon's going to revise. Sec, article six, section one.
Yeah.
Mister. I had a problem like this at our condo association. There's twenty-one units. So the, uh. Annual meeting used to be in the winter. Half of those units would be in, uh. Florida. Ben. Dead one. Any, anyway, uh, we resolved it real simply by saying that. A quorum is whoever shows up at the meeting. That doesn't mean that, uh. Uh, that has to be the number of people that, uh. Or half of whoever's there, the quorum is just a, uh, a group of people. If you want to pass something, obviously you've got to get. The majority of the people that show up. And I have it to the point where there were some times in the middle of winter where. Nobody but one person would show up, guess what? That's a quorum. That's a quorum, according to our legal documents. So I don't, I don't quite understand, is, is a quorum half of the people there? Over half? What if it's only, only eight of us here? Four, four doesn't get it passed. I mean, it's a number of votes that are representing half, over half the people.
If there's eight of us.
Fifty percent works.
No, we weren't saying fifty percent.
You got eight people on the board, you got to get five people in order to.
Nine people on the board.
I know, we do now. If you had eight, you'd still need five people to pass something.
Correct.
And we would have five people out of it, right?
Yeah, we have legally twenty-one people that can vote. But if three show up, guess what? Two, two.
But that's exactly what we're trying to avoid doing. That's exa, that's exactly, that may be work, work for your condo association, but I think that's entirely inappropriate in this setting. That, that, just a tiny majority, or tiny minority, actually, can, can have a profound impact on this organization.
Exactly.
And remember, by, by law, this is one of the reasons, you know, you talk about proxies and things, Lake Tran, any public entity cannot use proxies, you have to be present. So it's another idea, not to change the topic, but that's one of the considerations.
Should that be in there as well?
Anything else?
No.
I stand at rest. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Gary, for your input.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Frankly, I don't care what it says. I'm just telling you what we did to prevent when you, not even being able to do anything, because nobody would show up.
Yeah, that could be appropriate to get it to everybody or review.
Absolutely. So as long as everyone's on the same page, I think we'll, we will have Brandon do a review of this, make the revisions, circulate it to everyone, and, you know, I think it should be an agenda item for passage at the next meeting. Will do.
Do we need a?
There is specific languages, notifications, so it is, make sure we follow that. I mean, it's, it's only a week notice, but we need to make sure that that's, that's covered.
Would be a good.
Be in the rules, 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 guy.
I have one more thing, it's extremely legalese. Um, you know, the, Brandon, you know, the very first position that we talked about, about the superintendents and the construction, I don't remember what article that was, article thirty, maybe?
Is, it was under salaries.
The one that was about, that we had, that the board, that we, the late one has the power to appoint a higher.
Article three, section one.
Yeah, that one. Should there be, should there be a comma after financial experts just to further separate that those people aren't in, aren't being lumped in with the employees, necessary, blah, blah, blah? Like I said, I know it's extremely legal, but karma, you would be amazed how important commas can be in the law.
Yes, I, I'm a big fan of the Oxford comma and intended to do that. I think that's what, you know, I was having a discussion with somebody the other day about that, and the idea is, it's a, it's a grammatical issue that causes a lot of consternation. If you are saying John, Bob, and Sue, and you don't have a comma after Bob, the idea that Bob and Sue are perhaps, you know, together.
Right.
And, yeah, so, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Dines, feel free to get to work on this. Okay, so I think we are at the point of the day where we can conclude our retreat. We can then take ten or fifteen minutes to, for you to get your team in here, and then we can move forward. Do we have to have any sort of vote or call to adjourn?
Yes, yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Miss Stanger. Ben, please call a roll.
Uh, Mr. Sheets.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Magme. Shvalkowski.
Yes.
Miss Stanger.
Yes.
Mr. Zibble.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Epic. All right, adjourned.
All right, it's three thirty-six. Let's shoot for a three forty-five to three fifty.